So I see nine, 10. We're gonna need 13.
Bonnie is in the attendees.
Just need one more.
You've got it.
I think Bonnie got you there, right?
Yes, thank you.
I think we need one more.
We?
We need 13.
I just gotta count the names.
And Laura, Laura's not a member anymore, so we need 13 of our existing members. There we go, got done. Okay, great. Alright, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 5:02. Thank you, everyone, for joining. Roll call vote from Alfred Charles Ketchin, you're here.
Yes.
I'm here. I don't see Carl Stewart. I think he got the invite, so he may be joining. He's our new member from Alfred, from Egremont. George?
I'm here.
Great. Tom Berkel, is he planning on joining?
No, he's in DC.
And is there a new Egremont member? Do you know a new?
No, it's on our agenda for next meeting.
Okay. Great Barrington Deb? Is here. Peter is here.
Yes.
And Steve Bannon is here. You have full attendance. Good for you. Monterey, Don Coburn?
I'm here.
Great. John Silbert, not here. And is there a new member from Monterey? Do you know?
I'm assuming that Kim has.
Sorry, Laura?
I am going to assume that Kim has not yet been sworn in.
Okay. From New Marlboro, Tara?
Here.
Susan Smith?
Here.
And no new member from New Marlboro yet?
We haven't been notified yet, and so nobody's been appointed yet.
Okay. Sheffield Bonnie?
Here.
Nadine?
Here.
Colin?
Here.
So Sheffield gets an A plus two. Stockbridge Patrick? No. Michael? Okay, West Stockbridge Marie?
I think it's just gonna be me.
Great, thank you, Andy.
Steve, do you know who won the write-in? Sarah won the write-in, but that doesn't automatically. I know, I know. We have a meeting on Monday. We'll take care of it. Yeah.
Okay.
We're not gonna give her any choices. It's actually the moderator who appoints. Oh, I know. We'll talk to Gene.
All right.
You have some pull there? Huh? You have some pull with Gene? You know, he's our moderator.
Diplomatic response. Alright, let's move to the meeting minutes, which were circulated from September 28th. As for a motion to approve. Thank you. Any discussion?
Just a couple of comments. I don't know whether on page three under advocacy, talking to Smitty, Big DeTelly, it's the words should be individually. And on page five, it's my particular annoyance. It's singular possessive under where I made comments.
You want the apostrophe before the S and not after?
Because it's a singular.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, what else?
And then on page six. Let me get to it again, because I switched to the other. Is it's just a, just something really hanging. Sorry about that, I lost it.
It's okay.
All right. It's again, it was, everything disagrees. The bottom of page six, it's select, it was select board, but it's not clear. It was singular, not plural.
Individual towns. You want the apostrophe and the S inverted?
Right, yes.
Okay, yep.
And that was basically, I think it.
Okay. Any other corrections? Thank you, Bonnie, for that.
You're welcome.
Alright, hearing none, I'm going to ask for a vote. Charlie?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Andy?
Hi.
And I'm a yes too. So the minutes are approved. Thank you all. And Jake, I'm going to let you introduce Simon. Welcome, Simon.
Yeah, I'm happy to introduce Simon Holdafell, who I had bumped into probably a couple of months ago now, right, Simon?
Yep.
And Simon and I actually were working on having a discussion about a wholly different project on the Burke 12 side related to student field experiences and internships and supporting that sort of work. And we found that we had a lot in common and sort of similar interests and aspirations around public education and community service. And when this, the idea of having a facilitated conversation came up, and I talked to him, to Simon, about the work of the Regional School District Planning Board, I immediately thought of him. So we reached out very gently and said, what do you think? And he said, I would be very interested in, willing to help out to the degree I can. And we were able to have a conversation, he and Lucy and I, a couple of conversations about today and the board, and I'm really excited, excited to welcome him here. You've, I think most everyone has seen his resume. We did circulate that. The project management team did approve bringing him on, but might be great, Simon, for you just to tell us a little bit about yourself. And then I will pass the baton. Very excited to have you here. Really happy you're here. Just so everyone knows, Simon is volunteering his time for this, for this purpose. And so we do appreciate you taking all your week and your evening to be with us.
Yeah, for sure. Thanks. Yeah, I'll try to keep it short. I was born one county away in southern, in Wyndham County, Vermont. Went to public school. It was a great, great experience. Then I went away to Minnesota for college. And when I came back, I started working in education. So I spent about 10 years as a history, you know, social studies teacher. I was one of those people that whenever there was a problem, I would put my, I'd put my hand up. And so in that way, you know, was serially promoted to the point where for about half a dozen years, I ran the Darrow School over in New Lebanon, New York. So I've worked mostly in independent schools. My dad was a public school teacher for about 25 years in the same elementary school that I went to. Trying to think of what else. Yeah, so, and I'm a, I'm a small business owner here in Williamstown. And I, and I don't really want to talk about that because that's not really the point of the meeting. But it's, you know, I'm a school person and I really care about kids. I've got a senior at Greylock and a seventh grader at Greylock. You know, and so when Jake talked about this, I was like, oh, sure, you know, we've got, I'm sure, a host of, you know, excellently well-meaning people who, like me, care about the kids in this county. And so if I can get involved to facilitate a conversation, that's always, you know, that's, that's time well spent.
Thanks, Simon. Great. So Simon, we worked on an agenda for today, a series of things we're gonna work through. So I'm gonna pass it over you to start.
Sure. Yep, sure. Yeah, I'm gonna share my screen in a minute. So I just, I can't really proceed without explaining a bit about my business. So basically, what I do is I teach collaborative problem solving to leadership teams. And through a bunch of very lucky circumstances over the years, got to learn this particular method, which I'm gonna share my screen in a minute and show you. If anyone knew Val Feganbaum, this is basically what happened to his ideas 70 years later, after his ideas left the county, went significantly around the world and came back. And I was just lucky enough to learn these things about over the last 10 years or so. So when I share my screen, what you're gonna see is what's called a this is a visual collaboration board. If you ever worked in a manufacturing industry, you would recognize this maybe as a Kanban board, K-A-N-B-A-N. Yep. And so I just use this to keep myself frankly oriented to the conversation. Because when the, when the, when the stuff that we're doing together is visible to me, I can just stay more oriented to it. If this becomes annoying, you know, you can just write to me in the chat and I can, you know, figure something else out. But basically, what we've got over here is on the far left, the stuff that I understand from the motion is what we're gonna be talking about. We have some things to do. That's those three things in the to column. And where we're gonna start is just with some introductions, statement of purpose and outcomes for the meeting and ground rules. And again, I'm using this just so that we can collectively make the work and the stuff we're trying to do kind of stable and clear, just so we can communicate better about what it is that we're trying to do. So I just, I hope that people feel like this is not too intrusive or weird. I just want you to understand why it is that this, this particular sort of collaboration learning structure.
Simon, can I just stop here a second? We're getting a little bit of feedback from some folks. So someone must not be unmute. So if you, if everyone could just check their mutes, please, and then stay unmute, but certainly come off mute when you want to speak. Thank you.
I have a question.
Great. Yes, please.
This is not the facilitated discussion, right?
It is. So, so we're gonna be getting right into that once we talk about the ground rules of this thing.
I don't think the people who were on our board who wanted to be here, I don't, I really don't think people knew that we were, this is what we were doing today.
Okay, I mean, that, that, that could be, Bonnie. Certainly, it's not my position to take a position there. What I saw were minutes with the text in yellow as the purpose of this meeting. And I think that was circulated to everyone.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't actually how to respond to that, Bonnie, because we've sent out several emails. We had an agenda posted, so I, I'm not sure quite how to respond to that. Because there was plenty I noticed. We had actually two dates that we were holding for the facilitated discussion. The one we settled on.
Exactly.
Yeah. And then the next meeting is the full board meeting. So this is the facilitated discussion meeting. And Simon is our facilitator.
That I know.
Thanks.
So Susan, I think your hand went up for a second there. Was there something you wanted to say?
No, that's all right. Jake addressed it. It's just that it was in the agenda. Thank you.
Yep, okay. So while we're talking about that, you know, I'll just say I really appreciate people raising their hands. I understand that with a bunch of caring people, sometimes we get passionate about our beliefs and can step on each other's toes. Let's try not to do that because we're on Zoom and it makes it very hard to hear. Donald, yes, sir, your hand is up.
I would just like a clarification. Was Bonnie saying that she didn't think this was on the agenda? Or is she saying there's something wrong about what you put on your board so far in relation to what kind of reconciliation was expected?
Do you want me to respond, Tom?
Yeah, I'd just like to.
No, my only thing is, I know that there were people such as Tanel and Jane and Jeff and others who had expressed an interest that they wanted to take part in this.
I'm here, Bonnie.
Oh, you are? Okay, good. All right. So I withdraw. Anything that, it was just a matter of I didn't know if all of those people knew that this was our purpose tonight. Thank you.
Cool, great. Thank you for, thank you for making sure that we were, you know, aligned there. Okay, so you can see the rules of engagement. There's just kind of standard stuff. If you disagree with any of these things, let it be known. If we're in agreement that this is the way that we should be interacting here, then I'll just get down to the bottom. So this is just about the outcomes. The outcomes are that each person who is here with us tonight, who wishes to speak about whatever concerns they may have with respect to the language in red, has had a chance to do that, to say, you know, openly, respectfully, you know, what is it they want to say? And then what we'll, what we'll do there is I'll close this pane and we'll see a bit more. But just, you know, to make sure that this is a space that literally was designed to allow multiple perspectives and disagreement. And so I just want to make sure that that's clear, that we have those sort of, you know, a charge and specific bounds about that. Any questions on any of that? Okay. Then that is done. And the next thing we can do is look over here. So as I understand the purpose of this meeting, I tried to kind of boil it down to, you know, what is, what is that? You know, we have that text and read the agenda. How would I turn that into a question? Because usually you get better conversations around a question than a statement. So I just wanted to frame this up as how can the board surface issues that have been impeding the progress of this group? And if you look down in the lower part below, and this is 100% optional, so this is not a required input from anyone. If you would care to, it would be helpful just for us all to take the temperature of the group collectively that's here now. So if you could respond to this question, how important is this question, the purpose of the meeting? How important is this to you from your seat on the board? With five being very important and zero being not so important. And the reason that I want to take this temperature is, again, we're here to surface different points of view. And so I'm asking to see, do we have a range of points of view here? Because that is the essential question that's driving this whole thing. So I'm gonna encourage you to put a number into the chat if you want to. And again, you really don't have to. Yep.
I don't think we have chat capacity.
Yeah, Simon, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Yeah, we're in a webinar, so.
That I'm foiled. Okay, no worries. Then, let's see, how could we do this? You could hold up fingers on your hand. We could all literally hold up our fingers to the screen and be like, this is, it matters this much to me, it matters this much to me. Again, the purpose of the question is only to, in a small and incremental way, allow us to have a diversity of opinions on this question. Great, I see a hand up. George, what's your question?
Simon, you can't share the screen.
Yes.
All I see is you.
Okay, perfect. Let me stop sharing the screen. First, I'd just like to get an agreement that this feels like a reasonable thing to do just because we don't have the ability to use the chat. Does that present a problem? Because again, I'm trying to be here as a neutral facilitator, not sort of stepping on any, any toes. Yeah, Colin, question, comment?
Yeah, what am I, what am I ranking here? I'm sorry.
So, so if, if the, the motion that called this meeting together is, feels very important to you, I would want to see a five to say this really matters to me. If this is not important to you, you could go like this, or like this, or like this, just to show the group of people here who care about this, where you're at. Because if we can't surface those differences of opinion in a sort of safe and reasonable way, we're not really, like, that's what we're here to do. Colin, does that, does that response make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Stephen, please.
I'd rather just answer this verbally, if you don't mind, just because of the open meeting law, et cetera. So
Sure.
Steve, so it's a zero to me. I've been on a lot of groups over 25 years on school committees. And I realize other people have difference of opinions and I don't minimize those at all. But I think this is one of the best run and well-behaved groups and, and I've really been proud to be part of it. So I don't see a problem.
I appreciate that. Lucy, your hand was up?
Yeah, my hand was up because I was worried about the open meeting law. So I'm glad Steve clarified, but I, I think it might be helpful just to state the motion because everyone doesn't have that clearly in their head. And so, and, and I think it's important because the motion was really about engaging an outside facilitator. So when you say how important is the motion, are you asking how important is it that we have a facilitator having this discussion? Are you asking how important is it that we examine the difficult dynamic that interferes with our ability to make progress?
Yeah, thank you so much for that clarification. It's the latter.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
So I, I think it's very important.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Was there anyone else who'd like to give a verbal response? Oh, I see, Don, yep, go ahead.
Well, as the question is reframed, yes, we need to talk about it. So I'll give it a three.
Very good. Bonnie?
I give it a five.
Excellent. Andy?
I'll join Steve. I don't see a lot of importance, but I'll give it a one.
Okay, Nadine?
One.
Okay, Colin?
I'll give it a three. I think there's people that want to be heard about some issues and, and we want to make sure we hear them.
Great. Andy?
I'm sorry, I didn't take my hand down. But I will, I will jump in and say, and go a little bit further from the standpoint that as a public body, I, I think that the rules in place and, you know, particularly from, you know, my experience of what, six plus years in Massachusetts Public Service, that I, I think we have everything we need. We just need to be, I mean, in all cases, just be respectful. That's it. It's simple.
Yep. Bonnie, did you want to say something additionally? I'd see that your hand is still up, and I wasn't sure if you had a second item that you wanted to. Okay, Charles?
Yes, three. I'll give it a three.
Very good. And Peter?
Yeah, I would give it a three to a four for the reasons that Colin shared. I think if, if there are some in the group that feel that this conversation will help move forward, then I'm all in.
Great, thanks. George?
Three.
Okay, Tara?
I'm a three to a four as well.
Very good. Deb?
I'm a four to a five.
Okay, thanks. Susan?
I'm a three for the reasons Peter Taylor spoke.
Okay, great. Have I missed anyone? Tara? Your hand is up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't put it down.
Okay, no worries. Okay, very good. So then let me get back. I'll share my screen again. Thank you for that. Okay. So you did the first thing. And the second thing is really then kind of the, the meat of the issue. And so, you know, the question in front of this body is, how can the board surface those issues that have been impeding the process of the group? Hold that thought, if you would, please. And I'm gonna encourage people to take a few seconds, if they wish, to just think and formulate their thoughts. I was a teacher. I was dyslexic, so I was kind of slow in some ways. I want to give everyone the time to just like let their brain really stretch out around this important question and not immediately jump in with the most verbal person who wants to go first. Don, I'll see you and I'll come to you in just a quick sec. I want to give everyone plenty of time to just get their thoughts down before we take, before we take those comments. Yes, Don, please, or Donald?
Well, the answer is that issues have not been impending the progress of the group at all.
Okay. And so I'm just gonna capture that sentiment as issue number one. Not an issue. Would that be a fair, a fair way to capture your thoughts there?
Yeah, just to clarify, in the sense that we have continued all throughout this period to discuss matters, vote on matters, decide on matters, and move forward. The problem that we have at the moment is that there is a group of a few folks who are threatening to leave the group if they don't get their way.
Okay. I'm just gonna leave a all right. So if it's okay, I'd like to just pause on that to see if there are any comments on that. The one verb I just want to make sure I understand, Donald, is you used the word, some people are threatening, and I think that is how you've experienced it. So I'm not encouraging you to feel it any other different way. What I do want to do is just see, might there be other people who feel that the word threatening doesn't quite capture their particular sense of it? Again, just to see, do we have a difference or a range of views on that? Bonnie, go ahead.
I guess I'm one of the people that's, that I was addressing with that. And I, I really so strongly believe that Mr. Cobert has gotten to the heart of the issue that we're facing, which is, for me, a misinterpretation of the objectives of a number of people who entered this process open-minded and hoping for the best, but feel, and I will speak for me now, that there are answers I don't have. And I don't see how what we're doing right now is going to get me those answers.
Okay, so let me just make sure I've captured this here. The heart of the issue is that basically there are answers we don't have. Some, there are answers we, I'll just say, some some members don't have yet. some members don't have yet. Is that? Bonnie, does that pretty much capture the, the sentiment?
That's, that's a piece of it. That is a piece of it.
Okay, great. I see some other hands up.
The other thing being the piece that Lucy has addressed on a number of occasions over two and a half years. This whole sense of difference in culture and how we face this head on in order to have successful outcomes.
Mm hmm. Okay. I see a bunch of hands up. Um, Tara, if you would, please.
Uh, you know, I've said, I've sat on a select board for a long time. So I understand how to, how to deal with, with different temperaments and, and different people. But, and I understand how to be respectful to other people's feelings and know that they aren't, you know, there's not always one answer to the question. But sometimes it feels like if you really want to say something, you can't say it. Um, you, you can't say what you really mean because you know that you're going to offend someone. So you don't really say what you mean. You kind of just sit there and don't say anything. And then that festers. And if we do say something, then sometimes it's taken as extreme criticism. And then, you know, people get all, you know, angry about it. You know, so you, if, if everybody's not willing to be able to listen and you're not able to be able to just come out and say things that you really feel, then, you know, you're sitting there just holding stuff back.
Mm hmm. Okay. If I might just, I want to make sure I've captured this. Hard to say what you mean sometimes because you don't want to offend anyone. And that in, as you're experiencing this, more candor is needed. Does that?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I know one of the issues was me and I, and I will say I understand that. I was very blunt about something that happened and asked some real strong questions about it because I was not happy about it. But if I don't do that, am I just supposed to bottle that up and not say anything because I might offend someone?
Okay.
So I think that, you know, other people have to understand that, you know, there can be people who disagree and may even be not happy about something. Um, and I might not be happy about some of the things they say either. But, you know, that's how we're going to get this out in the open and find out what's wrong.
Mm hmm. Okay. Um, the next hand up was Susan.
Um, hi. Um, I, I echo what Tara said. Um, and I'm going to preface this by saying I've never been a select board member. I've never been on a school committee. I do have a job where I have to listen to people carefully and hear what they have to say. I was incredibly offended by the letter that was written by the Southern Berkshire Regional School District to this board, and it was threatening to leave this discussion. It, it, you know, we've all sat here for two and a half years. We've, um, you know, we've all had open access to talk and speak about what the issues are. And for them to say, you know, we're, we're walking if we essentially don't get our way. It, it, it's, and to put that out in the public without even presenting that to us as a committee as to what they were feeling. And then we react to that by saying, yes, we're going to have this facilitated discussion into see two, three, three members of the school committee here as part of this. I, I, I don't know how they're expecting us to move past this if they're not willing to participate. It, and, and just to follow up with, with what Tara said, this is, this has been a forum that I'm only have access to, to talk about what the issues are. I have found it so incredibly frustrating that the school committee has another forum that's available to them to get a message out, which we don't have the ability to react to or to even know about. Um, you know, we were all charged to come to this with an open mind, to hear everything, to get the answers. We're still waiting on answers. We don't have all the answers. We're aware of that. We, we process the information we have. We move forward. We keep waiting for all the, the information to make an informed decision to bring back to our constituents. And I, I just, I don't know where, where the disconnect has come that certain people aren't approaching it with the open mind and keeping, you know, listening and waiting for the information and, and participating. It's just, I am, I am frustrated and I am disappointed.
So it sounded like, um, I'm trying to just keep up with, with that sentiment, that there were some answers that are still needed. Um, but also, as I captured in that last card, participation, you feel like, has been inconsistent from the, the, from some members of the, of the body of the planning board. And that's made it harder to, to progress.
Well, inconsistent, not meaning that they aren't showing up. They're showing up, but then they're taking back a different message. And also they're bringing information to their constituency that I, no one else is aware of or has the ability to talk about or address. Um, you know, it's, it's kind of been, they're working behind a closed door, which is, um, really frustrating.
Okay. Um, Jane, if you would, go ahead. You're next in the queue.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I thought we were starting at 5:30, but obviously you started at five. And, um, I, I just want to say that I'm, it's very timely. I listened to something today about how people can come together and do positive work. And the, the listening, the quality of listening and the inclusion of the community and the conversation has been stilted since day one, that we were supposed to be speaking as one body. And the hostility that I have experienced for bringing in other ideas has been surprising to me because I've, I've dedicated 40 years to local education. And I had hoped that when people would speak up, that their ideas would be considered, uh, rather than seeing them as hostile because they don't, uh, match what the consulting team or, uh, the other, some other people find acceptable. I think that we have lacked enough people who understand consensus building and the educational issues that are at hand and have relied on the consultants almost completely for their information and their decision making. So it's been hard for some of us who are educators to, uh, see this happening when we have differing opinions based on, uh, good experience and intelligence and are, are seen as naysayers. Uh, and from the beginning, I was discouraged from speaking from my own expertise to my own constituency. And I chose for Berkshire, Southern Berkshire Regional School District, for us to be able to have a forum where we could talk about how we see it. And I think the idea that this is undercutting and being backdoor discussions, these are out in the open, public meetings that we're speaking at. And we are getting feedback from our constituents, uh, about how they're feeling. I don't think that this board has any, has made the appropriate outreach, not, uh, to hear from the constituents what they want for their education. Outreach means to this board, let's tell them the information that we have, that there's decisions we've made. And my sense of the sincere effort to engage the hearts and minds of our community has been a total failure. And there hasn't been an interest in doing that. Because education is hearts and minds. It's not just assumptions and data points and spreadsheets. Uh, and the fact that Tara's harsh words about how things went at Southern Berkshire reflects that she doesn't understand how people feel in Southern Berkshire. It's not that they want to gang up on the planning board, but there doesn't seem to be a sincere effort to understand why people are thinking what they're thinking. It's not an us and them situation. It's can we understand each other? And being on Zoom for two and a half years, I certainly can't understand anybody who's on this planning board because I haven't seen them in the flesh.
Um, Jane, I think, yep, thanks. I would love to, if you have some time while we hear from other people, if you would want to compose any of that, um, thought into something, you know, you said, we want to see such and such, um, and I apologize for not catching the words. Anything, anything you can do to describe, what would that look like? If that other thing was happening, would be helpful. Yeah.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. George, you're up.
Oh, I'm glad I'm in this spot in the queue because I'd like to, uh, follow up on both Susan and James, or Jane's comments. And I will attempt to be, uh, attempt to find, uh, courteous way to smooth valleys and hills of the subject of the other. That's a rather odd term, but Simon, let me tell you, that was the term that led to the motion that was passed that led to you. And one example of the other was what I consider the deplorable delay to elected officials of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District that simply deserve an answer. When they asked for a pause, it was ignored. That's how people feel like the other. And I see two options. You know, we hear you and we will pause and speak more with your many stakeholders, students, parents, community, taxpayers. Or, secondly, we can choose not to pause and say the planning board has a life of its own and it's all about a building. As an educator, I agree with Jane. I've heard very little educative discussion.
Okay. All right. So George, I think I'm going to just capture that next one as a need more. And when you say focus on education, um, you mean sort of the, the, the outcomes for the students? Is that what you're talking about?
Not just outcomes.
Okay, for just both for the communities?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Great. Um, Colin, you're up.
Um, I'll start by answering your, you had a question in the beginning about a threat. Um, and, uh, someone addressed it earlier. And I would say that there was a letter written and it was made public and I, I interpreted it as, as a threat or a if this, then that. So, um, so yeah, I, I would, that's the way I interpreted it. And then to, um, uh, address Jane's comment, um, you know, I'm not an educator, but I am a parent. I have two children who are school aged and are in school. And so I look at these things in a different lens, not as an educator, but as a parent, as watching my children being educated. And I think that brings, um, equal weight to the table. So I, I take offense when, when I hear someone saying, well, I'm an educator and no one's listening to me. Well, I'm a parent and I, um, am well aware of what's going on with my children's education or was when they were in the school district. So, um, so my point is, we all come at this from different points of view and, and our points of view, um, uh, and experiences should be, um, held equal, I think. That's why we're all here. We're all here to reach a common goal. Um, and I think that's where we're tripping up here is that some of us want to, want to slow down the process because they don't like the direction it's going in. And, and that's, that's a legitimate, that's a legitimate, um, I guess, want. But I don't, uh, it's also 24 of us. We have to make decisions and, and follow the, the democratic process. And so if, if the majority wants to go in direction X, we go in direction X. The other thing is, um, and it was brought up multiple times before this and, and then in this, we don't have all the answers. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to find, um, answers to our questions about how to solve the situation which, which we're in, which is complex. And we have to keep going down whatever path we're going down. And we may back up and decide that, wait a minute, we're down here. We got to go back to a certain point in, in the path we just walked and revisit something or go in a different direction in the past. So I am not, uh, interested in slowing down. I'm interested in continuing to find the things, find out the things we need to find out to make the decisions we're making. And we may make a decision that none of this works. But I'm not trying to slow it down. I just want to keep going and keep figuring out the answers. And I have heard Jane say, we don't know enough. We don't know enough. I've heard you say that, Jane. So I want you to know, I've, I've heard that multiple times in meetings. But I'm hoping we're going to keep learning more as we go. So, um, and I don't have a, um, I'm not looking down our path and going, all right, we're almost to the end. I'm looking at it going, what more are we going to learn? And, um, we may get to the end and say, this isn't, this isn't the right path. We got to back up. So I think I've said enough on all the things that were mentioned so far.
Great, thanks, Alan. And in the same way that I encourage Jane to sort of write out, you know, some of those thoughts so we could make them still more explicit. Um, you know, when you think about sort of the things that we still need to know from your seat, anything you could do to just, you know, clarify, ring specificity to that, I think could be helpful down the road. Daniela, did I pronounce that right, Daniela?
No.
Okay. Would you please correct me so I can pronounce it properly?
It's the spelling. It's Danell.
Danell, thank you. Thank you.
That's okay. Um, yeah, so just a couple of quick responses. Um, one to Susan as far as attendance, um, it's a bit tricky. We're in the middle of a change. And Simon, you don't have to write any of this down because I feel like it's kind of already been put into different, the other questions in different ways. But we are, we just did have school board elections and five of our members are new. So, um, it is officially, you know, five of these members are not on the board anymore. And, um, it's, it's tricky in trying to get them to this meeting during this time. I don't think it was intentional at all that, um, we're missing a couple of our school committee members. Um, and we're here. Bonnie, Jane and I are, are here and Laura. And, um, we've been on the RSD PB board from the beginning. So, um, that was not at all intentional. It was just a timing thing. Uh, uh, secondly, I, I think it's very unfair to state that we are taking back um, information that's kind of slighted in a different way and to our interpretation, to our constituents. Um, like Jane said, everything has been public, everything. Any question anyone has asked, whether it be from our school committee or from, um, the towns, it has been, I know myself and I know our school committee members as well. I refer to the eighttowns.org. I, I've said eighttowns.org a thousand times um, over the past few months. And I, that's what I refer to. That's where all the information is. Um, I, nothing is taken back at a different slate. Everything is taken back as far as we, we get the information from the meetings that we have as a board. And then we take that information back. Um, we've even handed out videos from the calls or recordings of the, the meetings so they can hear it for themselves. Nothing is done behind closed doors. We have had no conversations, just our board that has not been recorded. Um, so that was an unfair attack, I feel, or inconsistent, I, I should say. As, I, I think it's easy to say that as, as far as Tara, you're, um, from your statement, I, I get what you're saying because that's what we. from your statement, I, I get what you're saying because that's what we feel. It's when we bring up a question or like a new idea or another way of doing something. You know, it's almost like we're afraid of what the answer is going to be and we're not heard. So that, that's where that's coming from. I know how you feel because that's how we feel on the other side. It's unfortunate that, you know, there are a few of us that are, want to take a, a step back and slow down. And Colin, I, I get it. Moving ahead, let's full speed ahead and we'll figure out the answers later. But then, then we're already at this spot, you know, if we go from point A to D and feel like, oh my gosh, this is not working, then we have to go through step C and B and take all these steps back in regression and maybe more time consuming um, without these answers where we have to keep back stepping until we maybe start all over and go for it again. So that's just, I mean, I speak for myself, but I'm part of the group where we thought we should slow things down. That if we get some of these major answers, and they're, they're pretty significant questions we've had, I think, from the beginning. Then we can make a little bit better decisions on where to move forward. We, we don't say, we're not saying that we never want to move forward ever. It's just that we, we need some certain things answered for our, our team, for our Southern Berkshire Regional School District constituency from, for the teachers, faculty, staff, kids, most importantly, the kids. So that, I don't know if that explains it better or it's redundant or whatever, but um, that's, that's what I have to say.
Great. Um, so you just, y- you're alluding to some folks feel like there's some still major questions under consideration unresolved and that there are, that there are some sort of outstanding in, as yet to be, I'm not sure what, as not yet visible to everyone, so some important questions where that we just don't have, that there is not answers yet.
Correct. And at no fault of the board or, or Jake's work or anything. It's just that, that we haven't got, yeah, we haven't gotten to those, those answers yet. Um, and like Colin said, yeah, maybe they're probably in the pipeline and as we go through things, we'll figure it out. But um, I, I guess, uh, yeah, what I'm saying is that why don't we take the, take the slowdown now? Try to get more information, answer those questions. So then when we do move on, it's kind of like a slow, and if we move on, it's like, it's a, it's a more smooth transition to where we're going.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for that clarification. Susan, you're up.
Uh, thank you. I, I just wanted to address um, Danielle's uh, last comment about backdoor um meetings. Specifically, in the very beginning of all of this, um, there was a meeting that the school committee had where Jane um said that she had spoken to um, council about how to get out of this regional school district planning board. That was not on their agenda when they spoke and we were not privy to that meeting or that that was even going to come up. And as I understand it, and I have not been to a school committee meeting recently, the public's allowed to comment at the end of the meeting. We're not allowed to participate in any discussions that Southern Berkshire has. So it is, it's um, it's, you know, it's a pretty defeatist situation that I find myself in. If I was aware that that was going to be spoken about at that school committee meeting, I would have spoken up, I would have been there. Um, and that was in the very beginning, that I think was in May of 2020.
Okay, Bonnie, you are up.
Thank you. Um, I want to go back to what Tara said maybe 15, 20 minutes ago, and I think she so much is, even though it's really hard, getting to one of the core issues. A lot of things are not being faced. And I think some of the points that Susan brought up were not dealing with. And if we don't have a way, all I'm, you know, as I listen, I mean, you're the facilitator, all I'm seeing now is just the surface of I almost want to say discord, animosity. And I think I learned, you know, from, from what Tara said, and even though it was directed right at me and others in Southern Berkshire School District, you know, you learn a lot. And you get information that's been too subtle. And it's, uh, it's a shame hearing now how many people believe that our letter was aimed at pulling out. Because I could tell you from being at that meeting, our letter was not aimed at be, at pulling out. It's aimed at being heard. And we look at it that yes, the building, the new building is an issue that hangs there. That's something we have to face. And in no way, you know, we've, do we want to stop that? I mean, Berkshire Hills has to do what they have to do. But we have a completely different approach to career education and career pathways. And it's one that is touted throughout the United States in terms of the role of high schools in career preparation. We have a different philosophy in terms of a number of issues. I will never deny the issues we are facing with population. I will say 9,000 times, that letter was not aimed at our pulling out. That letter was trying to get people to look at some of the issues we have raised. That nobody's building a new high school with what they want for a hundred million dollars. That we're concerned that we don't have the population for all of these different programs. We're concerned about the impact economically for all of our communities. We want to look at these issues and we feel that they're not being examined. And that what we're hearing is, we'll move on. I would never feel comfortable in stating that I have the information that's necessary in terms of our constituents. And Colin, our constituents are you and your children. So again, Tara, I'm glad you brought it up. Susan, I think you reiterated it. The amount of misinformation that's out there is just growing. And hopefully, Simon, you will, are leading us tonight to something that will be positive for us. And again, in our discussions, those of you who have not had the privilege of sitting through our meetings, nobody, I mean, except, I said this before, except for one person, nobody has ever said we are a totally against merger. I don't know what other way to say it. But Simon, I thank you for taking this on and listening to us.
For sure. Um, so I just want to, my encouragement, Bonnie, to you would be the same as for Jane and for other folks. Um, you know, you mentioned some sort of things that were unresolved, not visible, you know, as yet sort of still mysteries. To the extent that you can capture those in text, um, that would be valuable to the future deliberations of the, of the group.
And how do you want that sent to you?
E- email is fine.
Okay, great. And we'll have your email. We have it. Thank you.
I think so. Yep, yep. Great. Jane, you're up again. And then actually, you know, Jane, would you mind waiting? There just, I think there are a couple of people we haven't heard from. I don't think we've heard from Deb or Andy yet. Would you mind letting them go first?
The, the thing that I wanted to clarify is the re- uh, the reason for the pause, um, just for people to understand who are going to speak next. It has to do with the unavailability of the teachers and administrators at this time of year. We're very busy. We raised that if you want to have a quality discussion, it needs to be spread out with less meetings or in a different time period. It wasn't to pause and stop doing this. It was to get a pace that was livable with the important people that we need to participate. Thank you.
Okay, great. Andy, you are up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just, my, my contribution at this point is, is that I have what I've been hearing. And, you know, I was on the school committee when this process started and I went to a, a few of the meetings at the very beginning as a school board or a school committee member. Uh, now my role is different. I am a, a member of the select board of West Stockbridge. Um, the, I guess the, my observation is uh, that since I've come back to, you know, when I have maybe three meetings under my belt now. And by the way, I really enjoy group process. I do it all day at work and here I am. It's my avocation. And uh, but the, the key thing to, is to understand, I think, that this process is embedded or governed by mass general law. This, that, that is, this is a board established under the authority and under the requirements of mass general law. Uh, there's a lot of talk here about who's representing who and what's being represented. And ultimately, under mass general law, I think the goal is to have something to present to ultimately our constituents, the supreme legislatures of our individual town government. And um, town meeting is where it's at. And to say that uh, elected officials, either in Southern Berkshire Regional School District or the Berkshire Hills Regional School District somehow have a mandate that goes beyond town meeting uh, and represent, you know, you, you can talk all you want about representing constituents. Ultimately, town meeting is where it's at in, in the state of Massachusetts and under mass general law. So working on this process, I, you know, I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm a little baffled by slowing it down and this and that. Or even just walking away. It needs to be a process that gets a proposal of some sort or not. I mean, if a majority of this board chooses not to, to move something onto the warrant, then that's fine too. But it is a board established under master law. It is a, which there is no super majority involved. It is a majority process. And so I, and that's why I, I mean, this idea of, of the two school committees representing, you know, no, we're representing the entire Southern Berkshire area, the eight town area. That's what this board represents. It doesn't represent the Southern. I mean, you express your opinions, but, but this idea of, of factions within this board is, that's not what mass general law envisioned. So there you go.
All right. Thanks, Andy. Deb, you're up.
Thank you. Um, a, a couple of things that I, that I want to respond to. One is that I just want to echo something that Susan said because I listened to a meeting from May of, I think it was 2021 where what I heard, I heard rage at a Southern Berkshire School Committee and discussion of whether, of whether they could withhold funds or how they could. Maybe it was slow down the process. It felt like stop the process. And what I was hearing people saying at that meeting was not what I was hearing them saying at these meetings and it, it felt very disjointed. That I had forgotten about that until Susan mentioned it, but more importantly, what I'm looking for is clarification of what questions are unanswered. And what we really need to know in order to make that recommendation to the town that Andy was just talking about. That ultimately we're going to put something in front of the voters. And what exactly do we need to know to do that? Because we're never going to know everything. Um, and in that same context, what I've heard is people say, I don't, yes, this is what our project manager is saying, but I don't trust that information. I want somebody else's opinion on it. So one, one of my other questions really is what, whose information will you trust if not the information that is now on the atown.org board? Because we've, we've done, looked at financial projections and I've heard, well, I don't believe those financial projections. I, I'm, I'm confused and I think that's holding it up. So those are some questions that I have. And I just, the third thing I want to speak to is timing. And the fact that we have spent two and a half years on this and I've been on this board the whole time. And I, I don't know how many more years I want to spend doing this, number one. And I think that holding a group together for that long is, is a challenge. So we need to keep moving, feel like we're moving forward. And um, somebody mentioned this is being driven by a building. And on the one hand it is and on one hand it isn't. The fact is, and I do live in Great Barrington, I am part of Berkshire Hills, but the fact is Berkshire Hills does need to do something about their high school. It, it creates an opportunity to build a high school for all, for, for a merged school district. And if we don't, it will add a complication to later, it may add a complication to later merger. Um, and I just think we have to be realistic about that. And it's not because adding merging with Southern Berkshire is going to make it cost us less, make Berkshire, make it cost Berkshire Hills less to build a high school. That, that's not the rationale for the merger, though the high school puts a time pressure on it that might not otherwise be there. And I understand that and I understand that being a frustration. It, it's also just a reality. So I get very frustrated when people act as if the only reason this is being considered is because Berkshire Hills needs a new high school, because that's not the only reason it's being considered. I have my own questions about whether in an, in a perfect world, creating an eight town district is the right idea, but I also look at the population um, projections and I'm not convinced that we really have a choice. It's just a matter of when and we're looking at an opportunity. So I just, I get really frustrated when the, when Berkshire Hills and the high school get blamed for making this at a somehow unfair process. That's, that's my frustration.
Thanks, Deb. Yep, thank you. Um, uh, Don, Donald, you're up.
Okay, thank you. I'm not from Great Barrington, but I agree with everything that was just said. But there's an overarching point that we're losing sight of. And the people who are objecting to the process have lost sight of. We have a process that we agreed to. The process was to first have all the possibilities looked into on a preliminary basis and presented to us. That was done by Jake. The next step was for us to tentatively determine which one seemed to make the most sense. We discussed that and we voted on that and it was overwhelmingly the one that we are at the moment considering. The folks who are upset now on the opposition side have not raised their questions specifically raised their questions specifically with the general board at all and have failed to recognize that all those issues that they want to raise are still up for discussion in the process. As we move through the next couple of months, we may reach a determination that there is no point in a merger at all. We may reach a determination that the plan we tentatively decided on doesn't work and therefore we need to study the other plans. But that is the ongoing discussion. There's no need for a pause. What there is need for is discussion within the context and all the issues that they want to raise, that they think adversely reflect on the tentative decision about which way to go can be and will be considered fully in those discussions. We have the time to, to have those discussions. So what they're really saying is inconsistent with the, with, with the process that they agreed to enter into and is not, what they're asking for does not require a slowdown. It requires discussion at our subsequent meetings.
Great. Don, thank you so much. Jake, I'm afraid I need to just step away for a super brief second, if that's okay. I'm just going to turn my, Lucy said that the floor is yours. I just need to very briefly step away. I'm just going to mute myself and go off camera. I apologize for that. It is just a dinner time related thing.
I mean, do you want to just take two minutes?
Is, is that, is that within the practice of the group? Like, I don't want to mess it up.
Not typically, but it's fine. I mean, I actually just went off camera a minute because I needed to run to the bathroom.
Yeah, why don't we take a two minute pause?
Okay, that would, that would be much appreciated. Thank you so much. And Lucy, we'll come back with you at the top of the queue.
Okay. The voters are going to vote at the end of the day because none of us know that. None of us know that. And you putting those things back up or something?
I can, I can take that down if it's annoying. I can just capture them separately.
So I mean, Laura is the one who made the motion. Laura hasn't spoken yet. I hope she's going to speak before the end of the night, but, but to me, a distinction that often gets lost in our discussions is the distinction between views not being heard and views being heard, but not carrying the day, not being convincing to a majority on this board. And those are two different things. Having chaired or attended over 150 meetings over the last two and a half years and having read all of our minutes, I can attest with complete certainty that the views of all of those who have chosen to speak at our meetings have been heard. At least literally, they have been heard. Everyone, including the six who voted no in April on the further development of the merger model that was recommended by the research team, have been given all the floor time that they have asked for. No one has been denied floor time. So all views that have been articulated have been heard. The complaint that I've heard over and over again at our meetings is that the views of the minority have been argued with or dismissed. And the word argued here seems to me to be a loaded word. If the question is whether the views have been debated, whether they've been probed, whether they've been challenged, the answer to that question is yes, but so too have the views of the majority been debated, been probed, been challenged. That's exactly what we're supposed to be doing. We're supposed to be debating, challenging and probing all ideas that are offered to try to find the best solution to the challenges that I think we all agree these two districts face. I think the real problem here has been identified in prior meetings by several members of the board and most recently actually by Sharon Gregory at the end of our September 28 meeting. And that is that this board has a very hard time with anything other than unanimity. We need to get comfortable with the possibility, actually the probability, that we are not going to have unanimity on this question. And I think our challenge, I think what we should be talking about today is finding a way to move forward productively, both as a group and individually in the absence of unanimity. Because that's what we're going to need to do if we're going to make progress. I do want to correct some of the statements that have been made tonight as facts, because I think facts matter. And some of the facts stated tonight are just untrue. The fact that everyone entered this process with an open mind at the very beginning is not true. That's okay. People don't have to enter the process with an open mind, but let's not deny the reality that the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee very early on tried to shut this process down and consulted with counsel to find a way to shut this process down. That happened. We can't deny that happened. We've moved past that. We've progressed past that. I'm very happy about that. But that threat was explicitly made in an open meeting at the school committee. Let's not deny that community outreach has been done, a lot of it. We did a survey at the very beginning of this process. We got over 1,200 responses about what our community wants and thinks we need in terms of the future of public education in the eight towns. We did do community outreach. We continue to do community outreach each and every day. And to deny that is to deny the fact. It's not appropriate to say, we on the board don't understand Southern Berkshire. Fifteen of us on this board are from Southern Berkshire. Right? It's, it's not just school committee members who are part of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District. So we are part of that community. It's not correct that there was, in George's words, a deplorable delay on the request for a pause. We were in a meeting where we were discussing the school committee letter and no one of the six who have voted against proceeding with the recommended model of our research team, no one of those six made a motion to pause the process. They were all entitled to make that motion if they wanted to. None of them did. The motion that was made and that was unanimously passed was to engage a facilitator to talk about this difficult dynamic. So I, I just really implore people to hew to the facts here because they do matter. And yes, hearts and minds matter, but so do the facts. And, and let's stick to them. Let's try to have a productive conversation about how to move forward in the absence of unanimity. And in terms of all these questions that haven't been answered, I want to talk to that, speak to that because we have been asking everyone for the last, I don't know, nine months, to send in their questions that they don't think have been answered. And every question that has been sent to Jake Everwine and his research team has been responded to. And when that was, that point was made many months ago, Jane Burke said, and I commend her for her candor on this, but let's keep the candor going. Jane Burke said, it's not that I have any more questions. I don't like the answers I'm getting. And I'm not going to keep asking questions when I don't like the answers I'm getting. So it's not that there are questions out there. It's that some people don't agree with the answers that our research team have, has provided. And that's fine, but let's be honest about what's going on here. It's not that there are unanswered questions that are getting in the way of the process. It's that some don't like the answers that have been put forward. Fine, bring your own data to the table. Make your own suggestions. Provide your own answers and we can debate those. But don't pretend that there are unanswered questions on the table that you've presented that haven't been addressed because they have been addressed.
Have we lost our moderator? Oh, there he is. Oh, good.
Yeah. All right, Carl, you are up. Carl, are you still there? All right, Peter, Pete, yeah, Peter, you're up and we'll see if Carl, what happens there.
Never good to follow Lucy and she covered a lot of the points I was going to make. So I'm going to keep my comments brief. I just think it's important to speak to another dimension of our process, dimensions of our process, because one of the things that I've been impressed by through our processes is that we have had multiple opportunities to surface the issues, both at the full board level and at the, at the committee level. If you think about how our research team has approached this work, we have at the committee level really defined the scope for each of the steps of the process that's been under the charge of that committee. And while I have not attended as many meetings as Lucy, I have been to many across the committees because of my role as vice chair and being able to, in my interest in being at those committee meetings. And we've gone through a very methodical process with the help of our research team to have participation at the committee level to indeed try to surface those issues from committee members who have agreed to dig into particular areas of interest. And so I do think that we have had multiple opportunities to surface the issues. I also think that our research team has very methodically documented the sources of information they have used to bring forward their findings and their recommendations. And that brings me to my second point, which is about transparency. I think this process, because it is a public body, because it is ultimately going to result in a recommendation or set of recommendations that will go to town meetings across eight towns, we have really placed a lot of emphasis and invested resources in transparency in terms of making sure all this information is not only available to us, but to the, to the residents of the towns that we represent. So I do think it's important just to acknowledge, A, the process that we've used as well as the importance of transparency. And I think that process continues going forward in terms of how we have chosen to operate as a, a planning board in terms of, of committees and being able to identify questions that are answered by our research team and through our discussion. So I think we should try to use the process we've defined and we've been using to have to address the tensions that are here and have a constructive process as we continue through this work together.
Thank you, Peter. Carl, are you there?
I, I hope I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I, I've, I've been a member of this board for less than 24 hours. So hello, everybody. And I apologize if there's background noise because I'm sitting in the Sarasota Airport waiting for my plane to go back to Bradley Airport. I, I, I'm not, I, I, correct, somebody correct me or not correct me. Somebody advised me of the protocol. I first joined the meeting, Bonnie Silver was speaking and she mentioned the, that there was a significant amount of misinformation out there. Is it appropriate for me to ask another member of the board to, to, to expand on that, to say, what, what, I would like to know what misinformation is out there. I think it's important to say more that there's, that there is misinformation, but to specify what that misinformation is because just saying that there's misinformation is really meaningless to people who are trying to ascertain what is information and what is information. And it's easy to say misinformation and, and leave it at that. And then, then people who don't know what it is are attempting to ascertain a negative. And that's not an easy thing to do as Lucy and others in this group know. So is, is it appropriate for me to ask Bonnie, for example, name the two most significant pieces of information that you are talking about? That's, that's, that's my question. I'd like to know. That's, that's, that's my question. I'd like to know.
Okay, um, uh, thank you for that question, Carl. Um, Bonnie, if you want to respond, that would, that's obviously your choice. So Bonnie, I don't, I, I, it's also your choice to not, uh, say anything at this point. I'll leave that up to you. If you want to put your hand up at some point, I'll move you to the front of the queue.
That's fine. Um, misinformation is that. One, that the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee wanted to. Drop out. And completely stop. The process. That is not true. Someone's saying something. Um, misinformation is. That. Individuals on our. I'm hearing, um, and that, um, misinformation was circulated. About members of. Our administration and staff. And misinformation, um, about. Our attitude towards. Working to come up with a, um. A positive resolution and outcome. And Carl, if you remember. Years ago, you and I met with. Peter. Uh, with Steve Bannon and with Rich DeHaney to discuss so many of the things we are now discussing. Like a dozen years later, how we can work together more closely. So. I did, that only scratches the surface, but for the sake of time, uh, that's the misinformation I'll start with.
Thanks for that clarification. Thank you for that clarification. Jonathan, you're up.
Uh, hello, everyone. Um, I just, uh, I want to add to what a lot of people have said. But take a slightly different tact here, which is, um. You know, if anyone needed to learn lessons tonight, it's how to be in the minority. And I think, uh, we've all been in the minority in, in, in circumstances. I've been on elected boards and committees for 25 years and have been involved in other boards and committees. And I certainly know what it's like to be in the minority. And, um. Both. People in the majority and people in the minority need to behave the same way. And need to treat the process with the same respect and to treat each other with the same respect. But, um. The difficulty, and by the way, this can happen with the majority too. The difficulty sometimes is that the approach. That a group takes to, let, put it crudely, to getting what they want. Is. Is, is not, is not really, uh, legitimate or respectful of the process. And I'm, it's not always the minority that does this, by the way. The majority can be just as difficult when they don't get what they want. As the minority in a funny way. And they can change people's perceptions and they can manipulate things to make sure that. Their majority, their apparently majority view is accepted for, for the way they want it to be accepted. So. The beauty of the democratic process though, is that, um. As many people have mentioned and I've mentioned all along, is that it's, is that we have a job to do and we're doing it by majority. And we're doing it by simple majority. So. You know, for my, my money on this is I, I. Have heard from the minority all along here and it's been a consistent group of people. And I think. The way the democratic process works is that, is that. Anyone can make a positive proposal, proposal about what they would like to actually see happen. And to support that proposal. What doesn't work in these situations is when someone doesn't have or doesn't put forward. Their positive proposal, which is an alternate to the apparent majority proposal at the time. And let it be evaluated, discussed and voted on, and then accept the results. So I can only think of one example of this right now because Lucy just mentioned it. If people wanted to slow it down and they thought that was a positive proposal. Well, they should have made the motion because that's a positive way to conduct a democratic process. So, you know, for my money, both the majority and the minority are responsible. For coming into these meetings and working with this group with positive proposals. Not with negativity, not with sabotage, not with misinformation, not with vagueness. And I don't, and I don't use those, those words to describe just the majority, minority or the majority. Uh, uh, again, both sides can use the same negative tactics. But I think. The issue here. Is that. The minority is, is, is being outvoted whether they make proposals or not. And so that, so, so delaying the process becomes the objective and that's, that's not going to work. And it hasn't worked. We're all moving forward. So I, I welcome anyone, including the minority. To coming up with an alternative proposal for what we should do at any time in this process. And having it put on the table and discussed and voted on. But that's the way we need to treat everything we do here. Every proposal. And if you're going to be. If you're going to. Uh, talk about things and you're not going to offer a positive proposal for us to consider. Then that's, that's what's unproductive. So. This is a facilitated meeting for a very specific person, purpose, and I want to address that purpose in this way. We, if we facilitate this meeting and everybody walks around, A, feeling the same way that they did before the meeting. And behaving the same way that they have been behaving moving forward, we haven't accomplished anything. So the idea here is to remind everybody of what the process is and why it needs to be respected, no matter which side you're on. And that's what I would like to see come out of this meeting. I'm perfectly happy to hear everyone's concerns. And everyone's proposals. But what I don't want to hear anymore, frankly. Is. Make a kind of a negative, a, a need to stop something because they don't like it. That's not, that's not a responsible board member. If you don't like this process. If you can't do your part and accept the votes, you really shouldn't be on the board. Because this board is, is the mission of this board is to put a proposal before the five towns or the eight towns. And that's what we're going to do. And that's our jobs as individuals as well as committee members. And if you, if you honestly, if you don't want to do it. Then let's, let's, let's find people who do. Thanks.
John, thank you, Jonathan. Um, Laura, you are up.
Hey, everyone. Uh, I'm not feeling great tonight, so I'm not going to be on camera. But I guess I just really appreciate a lot of what people have said. Um, in particular, I appreciate Andy and Deb's framing way long ago in this, um. Forum tonight, uh, just around the, the charge, what we have to do and just sort of tech, really technically looking at. Uh, how mass law works and just town meetings. That's really what it comes down to. Um, I hear a lot of these technical issues being surfaced and I guess. You know, I'm, I'm pretty new to this process. I tapped in a year ago. I tapped out a week ago. So, you know, I, I. I wish you all well in this process. I know I'm going to be showing up in the way that makes sense for me. But, um. I'm still not hearing this sort of dynamic that I keep referring to that, uh. I can't put my finger on. I just simply haven't lived in this community long enough to fully understand. Um, so, you know, I think we've surfaced a lot of like really important things that just sort of need to be out there. We have a lot of super intelligent, qualified people to push this process forward, but. I still am not hearing anybody actually get at the. The di, this dynamic that from my perspective seems to just be. Old, like, you know, uh, just from. Long ago and I, I wish I understood more about it to, you know, direct things or, you know. Get into that, but I can't. I, I, I'm too new to all of this.
Thank you for that contribution, Laura, and I hope you feel better soon. Um, to come back to the statement of purpose for this meeting, it was to do, it was to examine this dynamic that we're speaking about. Um, are there any other, um, folks who would still wish to be heard, um, with respect to that question? Um, because we need to, you know, that is the charge here. Um, I do not know. Um, Lucy or Jake, from your perspectives, um, if there was a particular sort of defined endpoint. Um, or some specific deliverable out of this, um, body tonight. So I don't know if like other motions are to be made. I just, I don't, I want to. Be mindful, we have 15 minutes left and leave time for whatever sort of concluding stuff we need to get to tonight.
There, there's no identified deliverable.
Okay, okay. Great. And then in that case, I'll, I'll then just, you know, again, invite the group. Oh yeah, Susan, go ahead. You're up.
Thank you. I, I just want to circle back to the fact that that letter from the school committee was not intended to. Indicate that they're withdrawing. It's taken me a while, but I found it. And I'm reading from the letter. Again, it is unfortunate at this point. We are struggling as we consider withdrawing from the process unless we can take a pause. Stop being driven in our view by the MSBA's deadlines, et cetera. Bonnie, I take exception to your statement that you are never considering withdrawing from this. That to me, reading that language is a full-on threat. But if we do not take a pause, the school committee is walking. And reading that is, like I said at the very beginning, incredibly disturbing.
Colin, your hand is up. Um, I also see Jane's hand. Jane, if you, I wasn't sure if you were wanting to stay in line or not. So if you're good and wouldn't mind taking your hand down, that would be great just so I can make sure I'm getting to people. Colin, you're up. And then Nadine, you're on deck.
So, uh, I just wanted to do sort of address that, you know, deliverable question. And John brought it up in, in the things that he said, which, um, uh, thank you, John. I, I, I think you said, you, you, um, said some things there that, that really resonated with me anyway personally. But the question that you, or the comment you made was. Um, you, something about you, we've got to walk away from this and not. It would be, I, uh, the way I interpreted it is this meeting would be successful. If we walk away from it and we, um, our behavior is modified or changed. And we don't feel the same way that we did about things when we came into it. Uh, I'm not trying to put words into your mouth, but that's the way I interpreted it. And so I don't know how we answer that question. Um, because I think that's an important point is that the purpose of this was. For us to hear one another, I think, and then. Um, uh, take a different approach to it when we get to our next meeting. So I don't know how we, we, um. Get an idea of whether that worked for us.
Yeah, that's a, that's all I'd say. That's great. Thanks. And that, that's a helpful framing too, because it, it would then, um, the way you frame that would allow us to then. Sample the group and say, do we feel like there's been any change, you know, have people who felt unheard, for example, has that changed? And we can do that sampling of the dynamic right within this meeting if we want to in a couple of minutes. Nadine, you're up.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to touch on John's comment also about, uh, change in behavior. I would like to say that I feel that I have, um, bit my tongue. I've listened to everybody's, um, opinions at every meeting. If I disagreed, I didn't speak that I disagreed. I, I absorbed what was said. I thought about it a lot at the meeting. I thought a lot about it after the meeting. It, and if my mind was changed because of it, then I brought that forward at the next meeting. I, I. Was as. Positively respectful as I could be. At times when I was wounded deeply by words from some of the people on this committee. It saddened me terribly. I'd like to say that my constituents are the same constituents of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District. I'm a selectman in the largest town. We pay the largest share of the school budget. My constituents are the same constituents, the families, the childrens, the taxpayers. And I have worked tirelessly, uh, on this board to try to get to the right solution. Um, I was stunned by the comment that we don't, we don't have answers to our questions. I don't know what those questions are. Um, we keep asking and they haven't come forward and that's already been said, so I don't need to, to belabor that. But I, I, I don't think my behavior is going to change. I've been respectful. I've shown up at every single meeting. I've done everything that I've been asked of on this board. I have taken on chairman responsibilities when I didn't really. Have the time or the energy for it, but because it was important for the work of the board to keep going forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Nadine. Peter, you are up.
I just want to go back to the question of what hopefully will be different as a result of this meeting and. And some of, of John's suggestions and, you know, Colin talked about how we. Can, can hopefully feel differently, uh, behave differently. I'd add, you know, how we might be able to act differently. Because, you know, John, I thought very eloquently talked about the democratic process and the committee process that we're in the midst of and how. It is within our, our ability with parliamentary procedures to bring alternatives to the floor. When we are feeling like we can constructively add. Uh, by holding up an alternative approach that we take the responsibility as board members to do that within our established processes. Um, and I, I thought that was a really important point that we should remind ourselves as we're going through our process going forward is to take that. Um, ability that we all hold to, to, to bring forth alternatives within our formal processes. I think human nature always is that it's, it's, it's harder to build things up than it is to tear things down. And I think we need to resist that, that temptation as we look at something as emotionally charged. As changing something that's so fundamental to our communities over the last, you know, decades, how we've organized to, to educate our kids. Which is the most important thing we do as communities is educating our kids and we. We have so much of our identities and how we have done that for decades in this part of Berkshire County. And so it's hard. It's emotionally charged. And I think we just need to acknowledge that it's, 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 it's hard to come up with an alternative, but we all have the responsibility of, of doing that in a constructive way. And I thought John gave us a path forward of how we can do that.
Thank you, Peter. Um, with about 10 minutes, I'm still on the clock. Um, I just want to, you know, the words that I heard there. Um, in these last couple of responses have had to do with candor and respect. Um, you know, I guess what I wonder is, um, what would an increased level of candor or respect. Um, look like to the group at this point. Jane, it seems like you're back on camera and wanted to make a comment, so I'll just.
Yeah, yeah, I have a couple of comments. I think Lucy. Uh, demonstrated very nicely the way that she addressed. Uh, some things that I've done over the years in, in a way that I think is very off-putting and not inviting of understanding among people. I think one of the problems with the so-called naysayers is there's not a curiosity about why, uh. Where the thinking is coming from. I did submit quite a few, the, the, the structure of our communication is so stilted. I did submit quite a few, the, the, the structure of our communication is so stilted that we were instructed to write to Jake if we had concerns, which I did. And then I got responses back from him. The agenda are so packed that it's impossible for these kinds of discussions to be included adequately so that people actually understand where this thinking is coming from. She talked about how we need to bring agenda, we have to make motions about what we think is important. In that meeting, she referred to that nobody brought up this issue of pause in a particular meeting was because we went 15 minutes over our allotted time talking about the facilitator. And then she adjourned the meeting before I had a chance to request that discussion. So I think that we're trying to pack a lot in, in a short time. And the kinds of understandings that I would like to have require more conversation, which is very hard on Zoom. I, and I think that going forward, I'm just going to tell the committee, the board, that when you have an expectation that you're going to have a regional agreement ready to vote on in January, when we are, the discussion that we had on at our last meeting, we only attended to one item when there are many others that need conversation, that it takes a long time to process these complex things. Uh, nobody ever asked me why I have the opinion that I have. Or there just doesn't seem to be a curiosity about a conversation that I value or the conversation with the community as I see it, that it's a two-way street. I don't think a survey is the way to really have a conversation about education. And I also think there's a lot of misinterpretation that has to be dropped. When, when we say at Southern Berkshire that we came in with an open mind, I thought we were coming into a discussion about the value of education, the meaning of it to our towns, the opportunities for creative solutions. And we never have had those conversations with our communities. I think that's part of this process that's been left out. And it, I thought it was a fantastic opportunity to bring education to the forefront and get everybody involved in this process. And it's been very narrow. So I don't hold much hope for this group because I hear how much resentment there is. It's just not being approached in a way that I had hoped it would. And I have felt all the way through that there wasn't an opportunity to be understood. So, and I think that, uh, community members may be feeling that too. And I just want to say that the idea that somebody disagrees has to then agree in the end is anti-democratic. Those people who have different ideas should not be vilified because they are just as valid as the so-called majority. And I think when you get over vilifying people who have different ideas, it will be helpful. It will be very helpful. And if there was a little bit less that we are right and we know what to tell the public and more we would like to hear from the public, what they, what they think, uh, it would be very helpful. And I do not wish this to be a failure. I'm sorry that I'm not allowed to be on it anymore because of the fact that I just chose not to run for reelection. I think it's a shame that other people who came on as elected officials are still serving. And that there is this one qualification that the only reason that the school committee members are on is because it was by law. So I think it's, it's an interesting situation that you're losing a good chunk of your school committee members who've been here for a long time. And there's been no outreach to them about how they can continue to help. So, uh, good luck with this. Uh, I found it extremely unpleasant unnecessarily. And I hope you can be more welcoming in the future of each other. It's not just listening. There's listening, like being quiet when somebody's talking. And there's another thing of taking in what they're saying and being curious about why they feel the way they do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane. Bonnie, you are up. And just so you know, we've got about just over five minutes on the clock here.
Okay, I will not take up much of that. I have to say, I was, I am quite disappointed at the suggestion John Silbert made. If you disagree, maybe you should consider leaving the board. Maybe I misinterpreted what he said, but that's what I heard. I will not go through my decades of dedication to education innovation. And my strong sense of why I joined this board and applied at the very last minute. I, you would ask for feedback. I am leaving more disappointed, more upset, more hurt than I entered this meeting.
I appreciate that candor. Jonathan, John, you're up.
I just want to respond because it's really difficult to say something clearly and distinctly and then have it turned around and distorted. I never said if you disagreed, you should resign. And I, I really, I really find that offensive. What I said was you should bring forward all of your proposals and let them be considered. And then if you cannot work within the democratic process and in support of the mission, then you should resign because you have, you, you shouldn't be here. But never, and I'm going to say this three times, I never said people who disagree with each other or the process or anything else should resign. I never said it.
John, thank you for your clarification. Totally thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Susan, you are up and we've got just two minutes on the clock.
Okay, I'll be really quick. Just to follow up what Jane said. I, I, I'm surprised to hear that she was expecting people, people to ask her what, to, to elaborate on her positions. And maybe that's just a misunderstanding of people. My job, you know, I'm an attorney. When I present a position, I have to present all the reasons why. So I was always waiting for the reasons why. And things were just thrown out there and the backup information was not given. So I don't know, maybe going forward, if someone has a position about something in particular, if they present the reasons why, it might be more helpful or provide for better understanding. It's my comment.
Okay, um, we are right up against the end of our time box. Lucy, I think I hand this over to you at this one. I'm not sure what the procedure is.
Yep.
Okay.
Hand it over to me.
Very good.
I'm going to take public comments. So then I, I'm going to have a few words of recognition and thanks to those folks who have spent the last two and a half years on this planning board with us and are rotating off because they're no longer on the school committee. So I hope they'll stay on for that because I would like to recognize formally their contribution and effort in this work, but that's the plan. But first I'm going to take public comments. Sharon Gregory.
I just promoted her, Lucy.
Okay.
Sharon, you should be all set.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. First, uh, I just want to introduce the fact that the committee in two and a half years has basically spent a lot of private and public monies generously donated. And any delay would have cost a lot of money and could have forfeited some of the use of the money. Jake Everwine has been extremely diligent, to the point of being boring about how many pennies there needs to be and how much has been spent. So, you know, it isn't, um, I think the planning has been excellent and the fact that people think that at the end you can do this is just not realistic. Second, I'd like to just say, I have personally worked with Lucy Prashkar in the private sector for 10 years. She was our outside counsel and I was the inside contact. She has always been respectful and we didn't always agree. And I really resent putting her in an unprofessional light. I've attended most every meeting and I don't see this depiction of that was described here. And I'm sorry that this has gone this far. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Any other public comments? Okay, um, so we're up at seven o'clock. We have leaving the planning board, uh, three members, as I understand it. Donell Kelly from Egremont, Jane Burke from New Marlboro, and Laura Rodriguez from Monterey. Molly Thomas stepping off from Stockbridge. And I believe Sean Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong, Jake, is also step, stepping off from Stockbridge. Because he did not, as far as I know, he did not run for school committee. So those five folks who have put in an enormous amount of time, effort, contributed to this discussion. Thank you. Thank you for your service here. Thank you for your service in other positions in the South County, in South County. I think I can extend on behalf of the full board, our heartfelt thanks for all you've contributed to the process. And I do hope you stay engaged. I know Laura has agreed to stay engaged with the youth forums and I encourage all of you to stay engaged as we continue our work forward. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Okay, I'm hearing no objection. I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
What, she didn't take a, a roll call?